October twenty first, two thirty four P M. Board Meeting Room Thirty Nine Bang Street, Chatham, Virginia, two four five three one. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Dudley? Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Thank you. Any items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dalton.
I'd like to make a motion to remove item eight A from the agenda.
All right. Is there support for the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any discussion? Here and none. Cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. All right. I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Yep.
Second.
Second by Mr. Height. Any discussion? Here and none. Cast your votes, please. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. All right. For the citizens convene all work sessions and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the county's Facebook and the same YouTube location as the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting. Please remember that the board's work session is designed for internal board and county staff communication, discussion, and work. It is not a question and answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outburst of disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in the offending person's removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties, as designated by the board's bylaws, are permitted to make comments under the hearing of the citizens section of tonight's business meeting. We move to five A of the agenda presentations. Blue Ridge Innovation. Let's see. Mr. Clark. Good afternoon and welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I appreciate you having me. My name is Tim Clark. I think most of you know who I am. I am the president of Blair Construction. I am the immediate past chair of Go Virginia Region Three. I'm the fundraising chair for the Southern Virginia Regional Alliance. But today, I am here to talk to you about an executive committee that I'm on for the Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor. I think you've probably heard about the Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor for the last several years. It's been something that kind of started as a project in Martinsville and Henry County and has more recently been embraced by the leaders of our bigger part of our region. So today, I'd like to give you some more information. I feel like you've been hearing about it but haven't had an official presentation. So today is your opportunity to have an official presentation about what we are doing for the Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor. Today, I hope to let you know a couple of key factors as we learn about transforming rural Virginia into a national model here in our region. I want to explain to you who we are, why we exist, what we need next, and the impact that we can deliver. I've got just a short twelve-slide slide deck that we'll be working through. I apologize if some of the, I'm worried that they might be a little bit too small, but I think I can talk through most of them. So what is the Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor? So the Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor is the region of Virginia that starts in Blacksburg and runs into Pennsylvania County and Danville. It comes across Blacksburg, through Roanoke, down two twenty, into Martinsville Henry County, across fifty-eight, and into Pennsylvania County and through Danville. And we're even working to make sure that we pick up Hitachi on the South Austin side and the Halifax County side. It is a group, it is a five oh one C three that was started by a group of business presidents and CEOs from across the region. You can see the various logos on the screen and in the packet that is in front of you. It is, we put together a group of, I think, forty-seven or forty-eight now business presidents and CEOs that have, that are funding this initiative, the Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor. So you can see the counties and the municipalities that are represented alongside on the left-hand side of the screen, and we believe that working together, the communities can create or create, I think it's already been created, but market what we would call a mega-region, and we'll demonstrate it as the fourth largest region in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So why do we exist? To build the BRIC region into an economic development powerhouse and a national model of rural transformation. So that's a lot of words. I don't want you to think that it's never been done before. It's been done in other parts of the country, probably most notably in northwest Arkansas with where, you know, Sam Walton and his family founded Walmart and Tyson Foods moved there, and now it is one of the most robust rural economic centers in America. We feel like our region, the BRIC region, is poised to be the fourth economic development engine and economic driver in the Commonwealth. So we've got, there's seven different reasons around that table that show that. So Virginia Tech is number six amongst all U.S. universities with their largest funder being the Department of Defense. In Roanoke, they're expanding biomedical and life sciences sector. We've got a world-class healthcare system at Carillion in Roanoke. We've got a national workforce training model I'm sure you guys are familiar with and have toured, the things that are going on at the institute. We've got a growing workforce that is largely supported, you know, by our community through GO Tech, which is an opportunity that was born in Danville and funded through Go Virginia at the state level, and we are, you know, we are in more than half the middle schools in the Commonwealth now. People are growing here, moving here. We are having some population growth, and we are home to three of the top industrial sites in the Commonwealth. And our hard work is paying off. So this is, I think this is a really cool slide. If you see, this is kind of a regional analysis of population, employment, and real GDP. So this is the slide, this is the meat in the slide, okay? This is the meat of really the presentation. This demonstrates that our region has a population of seven hundred and fourteen thousand people. That's, as a region, the fourth-largest population region in the Commonwealth. Our employment is three hundred and twenty-six thousand. Again, as a region, the fourth-largest group of employed folks in the Commonwealth, and our real GDP is approaching thirty-four billion dollars, trillion dollars with a T, sorry. I don't think you realize this. I didn't, I don't want to speak for you. I can tell you that I didn't realize this when we started on this endeavor. And this is not something that we have to work to do. It's already, we've already done the work. We just need to come together and band together as a region to create this mega-region, to be the fourth-largest, and claim the fact that we are the fourth-largest engine in the Commonwealth. And you might say, well, can I get some more data on that? So the next slide that you have is the real GDP and how it has grown since two thousand and twenty. And you'll notice that only northern Virginia's GDP has grown faster than our region's GDP. Now, before I got involved with the BRIC, I would have not ever guessed that, ever. But when you put the data down, and we had Chumira do this analytical research for us, when you put the data down, you'll see those bottom two lines are Richmond and Hampton Roads. Our line is the yellow line, and we are continuing to grow as a region. So we are delivering surprising results in key industries, not my words, the words on the slide. I think that we have, I don't know how surprising these really are, right? We have, for the last twenty years or twenty-five years that I've lived here in Pennsylvania County, I know that we have worked diligently day in and day out to drive things like advanced manufacturing. But you see on these charts that, you know, despite only eight percent of Virginia's population, we account for twenty percent of the manufacturing growth. I'm just going to let that soak in for a minute. And of that, thirty-three percent of the manufactured employment growth in the whole Commonwealth. So you'll see the employment growth to the right on those three shorter bars, and you see our region's growth in the yellow bar. I mean, you don't usually, I'm not sure that we always get to celebrate things in our region like this. I think this is something that is worth being celebrated. That is why it has been a pretty easy task to recruit business leaders from, through the region, throughout the region, to come alongside and support this financially and give to our five oh one C three and join our executive leadership team and work with us in moving this vision forward. So as a consequence, and as you know from the economic development announcements that have happened here and in joint with Danville and to our friends to the east and our friends to the west, our employment is forecasted to grow over the next ten years. So again, this is a Chumira chart where we see that a continued growth spurt, you know, through twenty thirty-four of how our employment will continue to grow on this trajectory that we're on. So how do we support that? How do we support a growing workforce? What are the needs? So the needs are infrastructure improvements, roads, rail, air service, digital access, workforce housing. These are topics that we all talk about in meetings every week and that you guys talk about in this room. We cannot drag our feet on some of these issues, and it's the business leaders in the region have come together to create BRIC, to be able to deal with some of those things. So what's our vision? So the BRIC twenty, the vision is called BRIC Vision Twenty Fifty. The overview is our signature initiative. It's a once-in-a-generation strategic planning initiative designed to unlock the full economic potential of the Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor. It's grounded in broad community engagement and support and guided by expert consultants. The Vision Twenty Fifty will become a master plan and ultimate game changer for our mega-region. At its core, Vision Twenty Fifty will create a shared vision for the mega-region, core strategies, and a detailed implementation playbook for the Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor, for the organization and for the mega-region. So what's our approach? It's a three-phased approach. We are working diligently and very quickly through phase one. Phase one is building teams and setting the vision. So I just read to you parts of the vision. The team is largely identified on the first page, the second page, where it had, you saw a lot of the logos. There's forty-six or forty-seven of those logos now of regional employers where we have the number-one or number-two person or the number-one person on site is on our executive committee, and we meet every other week. The next phase would be technical strategies and expert work streams. So that's going to be what we're going to do from January until June. That is where we will go out and find and hire world-class strategists that will help us make a plan for our rural community, for our mega-region, so that we can market it and move it forward along the vision. And then phase three will be the integration and the blueprint development. So we are also presenting this blueprint to the, it should, it will be included in the Blueprint Virginia, which is the Virginia Chambers Initiative that they'll put before the new governor this fall at the December Chamber meeting. So what do we need? And you gave me twenty-five minutes, and I appreciate that. This is not a hard sell, I don't think, but we need your support. And so I'm not asking for a big box of money. I'm asking for your support and maybe a little bit of money. So we are going forward with a Go Virginia Planning Grant, and that Go Virginia Planning Grant needs support letters, which we have for most of the localities, and we hope to get from you, which is my biggest ask today. And we would love to have some support to put with that. As you know, Go Virginia requires a match from localities. So it would be spectacular if we could have a five thousand dollar amount to put with that, to be able to kind of put a little meat behind it, to let everybody know that the community is supportive of the BRIC initiative. Our friends in the south in Danville have already committed to this at that same level, and I hope that you would, too. So I'll just finish up, and we'll go through what the goals are. So our goal is to unite the region, to build a shared mega-regional identity. We spent our meeting last Tuesday working on a logo. So you got, imagine you have forty people that run businesses from around the Commonwealth arguing about how good a logo looks or doesn't look or what color it should be. So that, we did that last week. You know, we are going to continue to solidify our position as the fourth economic engine and work to continue rooting our region in innovation. We will have advanced cluster scale-up, which we've already talked about, some of those clusters in advanced manufacturing like we have here, life sciences and biotech like we have in Roanoke, and national security like we have in Blacksburg. We're going to continue to strengthen those workforce pipelines. You know that we already are doing a bunch of things. There's already a bunch of things happening in our region that are strengthening those pipelines. You know that GO Tech is a studied model all over the country. People are coming here to look at it and to see it and study it and see how our kids are doing. We're going to identify the infrastructure that we need. One of our, kind of first things that we're going to try to tackle is that piece of road on two twenty from North Carolina going north, where if you've been to the Commonwealth Crossing site down there, it's, you're taking your life into your own hands if there are trucks on that road. And that is, we think, is low-hanging fruit, that we can get the attention of the state government and the federal government to come alongside us to improve that. I mean, if you've ever left Greensboro driving north and it's like a beautiful day and there's birds chirping, and you get to the Virginia line, and then all of a sudden, you're fighting for your life amongst the tractor-trailers. We think that's a critical part of, you know, of making the world a better place. We know that we have to work to secure sustainable funding, which we'll do that, to ensure lasting impact through twenty fifty. So our deliverables will be connectivity strategy. We'll unite BRIC's assets, like we've talked about, the institute's training, Roanoke's life sciences, Danville and Pennsylvania County and Martinsville Henry Counties' advanced manufacturing leadership, and Virginia Tech's Department of Defense research. You know, those are all things that are critical, and when we bind together as a group, will be easier to fund. I mean, we have, the forty-six members of the executive committee have all committed to a three-year pledge to make sure this gets up and going. We've got enough money to be able to pay our leadership. They wake up, we have folks that wake up every morning thinking about this, thinking about how to brand our region. So our funding is this last slide. So the BRIC Board contributors are the main source of funding. So we do have local foundation funding. We have received a hundred thousand dollar grant from the Harvest Foundation and a two hundred thousand dollar, we understand that there's a two hundred thousand dollar grant on the table at D R F, which we hope will get, will come to fruition. We know we've done a presentation for D R F, and they believe in our mission and vision. And then we have applied for, or we are in the process of applying for this Go Virginia statewide competitive grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, where we do need in-kind monetary and written support from the localities in the region. And then going forward, you know, we will continue to look for additional sources of funding, but we do not intend for this to be a government-funded initiative. This is a private industry-funded initiative that we have folks that wake up every day thinking about the mega-region, trying to make the mega-region a better place, and hopefully with aligned visions and missions along with our municipal partners. So that is my twelve-slide presentation. And with that, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask for questions, but if you have any questions...
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any questions from the board for Mr. Clark? Great presentation. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, sir.
Good, good presentation. Some of the things that you've hit on, the goals, and two that jump right out are the strengthened workforce pipelines and the infrastructure, which we all need. It doesn't matter where you go in any one of these localities. So those are very good. I like that. Also, have you talked to anybody with West Piedmont Planning out in Martinsville about this? I have a meeting with them on Thursday night. This is the first I've seen it. They would probably be somebody you want to pull into the mix on this.
And we will. We wanted to get the, we wanted to get the local elected, get to the local elected people first, folks first, in the mega-region, just because, you know, it was, I felt like we needed to do this kind of last month. it was, I felt like we needed to do this kind of last month. But we got here as fast as we could, right? I just, we didn't want you, we didn't want anybody to be, you know, going home at night saying, "Great day, how come nobody's talked to us about this Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor? We need to, we, you know, this is our, this is, this is our county. We need to know about this." So I think it's a methodical approach on, on how we approach folks. Um, I was in a, I was in a workforce housing meeting last week with Sean from, from West Piedmont, and we'd shared a little bit about this. So, uh, we will, we will continue to, to grow our net. Um, our, again, our initial function, function was to make sure we had support from the presidents and CEOs in the region, and make sure we understood what we thought our vision and mission was, and I think we're, we're well on our way to doing that. And with this, with this Go Virginia grant, and that is a grant to help us with that strategic planning, kind of putting meat, we've, we've built the skeleton, now we need to put meat on those bones. And so, the Go Virginia money will, will give us, and, and the money that hopefully we can get to match that, uh, from local governments will, will be able to really help us put meat on that. And I look forward to coming back and having this presentation as we put meat on those bones, and we continue to, to move forward with that.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dean.
Uh, Tim, thank you very much. It's a, a good presentation. Uh, did I hear you say you were asking for 5,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Last page is 25,000, so-
So that's all the local governments combined.
Okay, got you.
So-
It doesn't seem like a whole lot, though, to me.
Yeah, well, I wanted to make the ask easy, so-
The only, uh, input I would have is that if you took this road from Blacksburg to Charlottesville through UVA and come back down, it might be a little bit more productive.
Well, you might get hung up in the track.
I had to, I'm sorry.
I hear you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
It has been a, we have had good, and good conversation about, you know, there are, there are manufacturers and people that make things, right, who, who see this and, and want to be part of it. And so, we're open to, we're open to other company, other groups being part of it, um, as long as they do business in our, in our footprint and our region. I think we can make that argument. Like with, with Hitachi, you know, they're going to be the largest transformer manufacturer in the country, you know, in South Boston. And they are, they are using our roads and the rail system that runs through and all the pieces and parts that run through us, right? So it makes sense for me, you know, that they would be, that they would join us and come along and be part of that. And I think there are other folks that will come along too. And we're still very much in the, it's, it's not completely under wraps, but it's a little bit under wraps, and we're starting to roll it out. We just wanted to make sure that we came to you as soon as, as soon as we had our kind of, like I said, the bones were created.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Tim.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Clark.
Tim, thank you for that presentation. Uh, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
We can accomplish so much more when we work together. You know, I, I grew up in this county. I remember the days of us versus them, and those are days long gone. I hope and pray. Uh, you know, this, you know, I, I'm looking at the list of the businesses and the leaders you've already got on board. Y'all have a vision, and that mega region, people, people don't realize we've got to think we're just not Pennsylvania County, we're just not Pennsylvania County, Danville. We're a region, and if we can work together and collaborate, that region will continue to grow. And, and some of these numbers, I was actually surprised. You know, when I see us outperforming Richmond and Hampton Roads areas, I'm like, hey.
It's a, that's, that's the meat of, of the presentation for me. I mean, when we can look, when we can sit together and say, here's what we look like from one end to the other, and here's how many people it is, and how many of them are gainfully employed, and, I mean, this gives us tremendous, once we get this marketed and, you know, people already talk about our, our smaller region as, you know, all over the Commonwealth when you go places. When we can get this bigger, just a little bit bigger region branded, and then we start to carry some weight, not just at the state level.
That's right.
Uh, and that, to me, that's a, that's a very exciting thing, uh, when it comes to making sure that we have our piece of the pie for rural America. I mean, you, you only have to turn on the news for a minute to see all the things that are happening, new and different in rural America, that they weren't talking about 10 years ago. And so we just need to make sure that we're positioned to take advantage of that, and we feel like this is a great first step, or maybe first five steps to do that.
That is a great admission.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Clark. I, uh, I've been exposed to it. In fact, I met with Mr. Davenport one-on-one, and he kind of brought me up to speed in terms of what's going on, uh, as far as the infancy stage, the region, and, you know, the vision. So I really appreciate it. Mr. Evans, my question to you, sir, from legal, do we put this on the consent agenda? Because the ask is for a support letter from, uh, the county, so we need to authorize Mr. Shorter to write a letter of support and also a $5,000 ask.
That would need to be added as part of the business meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
We'll take care of it. Consider it done. All right. We move to 5B. We have guests with us this evening. One of my initiatives was to, uh, form an environmental commission, and, uh, I approached Ms. Whitehead to help us, so she got us in touch with our esteemed guest this evening from, uh, the University of Virginia. Mr. Jaffe, would you introduce our presenter, please? One of the students, and we really appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Tucker. My name is Cale Jaffe. I'm a law professor at the University of Virginia, and I teach an environmental law and community engagement clinic. Annalise LeBlanc is here. She's a student in the clinic and will handle our presentation.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for inviting us here today. Um, as my professor mentioned, my name is Annalise LeBlanc, and I'm a third-year law student at the University of Virginia, and we're going to discuss, um, this idea of creating an environmental commission for the Board of Supervisors. So quickly, the agenda. Um, I'll start with an introduction to, um, the presentation and the purpose of this discussion, a few key areas of why we think an environmental commission would be valuable, turning next to an example from Loudoun County, and then have some time at the end for questions. So as Professor Jaffe said, um, I'm a member of the Environmental Law and Community Engagement Clinic, which gives students like me the opportunity to get engaged in these real-world projects that involve the environment and public participation and things like that. So we are here at the invitation of Chairman Tucker today to present preliminary findings about the possibility and benefits of establishing an environmental commission. Over the course of this semester, we will continue working to present a full report on our findings with the ultimate goal of creating potentially a model ordinance that the Board of Supervisors could use to establish such a commission. Chairman Tucker requested our help looking into the benefits of this advisory commission, and as we've begun exploring this option, we think Pennsylvania County may find this option valuable for a few key reasons. First, recent events in the county have sparked considerable public interest and engagement around the environment. Some of these events include, um, the Ballico Data Center and gas-fired plant that was proposed, the current debate over solar, um, construction in the county, and then the ongoing presence of uranium deposits. Now, to be clear, we're not here to take a position on any of these issues as they affect the county today. Rather, we would like to highlight how an environmental commission could help the Board of Supervisors engage with these issues and, um, provide answers and solutions to these tough questions. Second, we think with expert-driven analysis and reliable data that the commission would provide, the Board of Supervisors would be better able to prepare for the next development proposal down the line. Um, and we think it would help understand the environmental impacts of such proposals in the future. So at a high level, the Board of Supervisors would appoint members to serve in a volunteer capacity on the commission. Then that commission would study environmental questions either of their own initiative or at the request of the Board of Supervisors. That information would then be compiled into reports that they would provide the Board of Supervisors. And the, these would focus on really broad environmental questions. They wouldn't delve into specific projects or specific development proposals. Rather, it would be focused on creating, you know, the necessary context that the Board of Supervisors needs in the future, and encouraging public engagement and, um, participation with these issues. So based on our preliminary research, the environmental commission would provide long-term value to the Board in three main areas, and those are improved government efficiency, environmental information and data collection, and public engagement. So now I'll walk through each of those in more detail. Turning first to government efficiency. Um, the Board of Supervisors does not currently have a single dedicated body to deal with environmental questions, um, and these ongoing issues that the county faces. While other boards and commissions, like the ones listed here, may touch on environmental issues in the scope of their duties, we think that providing a space that's dedicated to environmental research and debate would be really helpful, um, for a couple of reasons. First, it would reduce any potential redundancies among information and data collection across the county government. It would eliminate fragmented environmental analysis, so having one body dedicated to this research and this work would make everything run a bit more smoothly and have basically one body responsible for this scope of work. Again, this would all be proactive and general research into environmental concerns, um, that we believe the Board would find useful in the, you know, down the line. This would functionally serve as an information library that the Board of Supervisors could use in their decision-making. It would also allow the Board of Supervisors to work more proactively to carry out its energy and environmental goals in the county. A commission would produce regular reports and ad hoc recommendations at the Board's request, and these reports would provide the critical context that the supervisors need to make their decisions. The next key benefit, as I've alluded to, is the information and data collection function. This function would primarily be carried out in two ways. First, an environmental commission would be conducting ongoing research and analysis into persistent and evergreen topics of environmental concern like water quality, resource conservation, and sustainability. And then based on this analysis, the commission could make reports or recommendations if requested, um, to the Board for approval of new initiatives or work projects. Second, the supervisors may refer, like I said, any issue that they think requires further study to the environmental commission. So this would be something that's potentially going to be relevant in the future, would be more topical. The Board of Supervisors could request that the commission look into a specific issue such as agrovoltaics or, um, other kind of more emerging issues. Again, the goal would not be for the commission to make a binding recommendation to the Board. It would be to create context and information for the Board to use when it ultimately makes decisions or sets policy goals. And the commission would do this by being able to aggregate public input that it solicits and gathers, um, countywide data and subject matter expertise into these reports, so we think that it would be a really valuable, um, again, library for the Board. Finally, the commission would also facilitate better public engagement with environmental stewardship and county government operations. It would serve not only as a forum for county residents to express concerns and learn about environmental issues, but also provide opportunities for involvement in the management of the community's environment. As you all know, public engagement is a cornerstone of effective local government, um, and environmental issues tend to be deeply personal and draw a lot of interest. So an environmental commission would be the productive and useful forum to bring all of these interests together and get people to better understand not just the environmental issues that the county faces, but also how the county government, uh, plans to approach these issues and how the local government operates. Specifically, a commission could have public meetings on a regular basis, community roundtables that bring together, um, individuals and organizations, and outreach initiatives to help bring people into the process. So to better illustrate these concepts in action, we looked to Loudoun County, which established an environmental commission in 2020, and we think provides a useful example for, um, this commission. So here I'll highlight a few key elements of the Loudoun County Commission. So first and foremost, Loudoun County's Board of Supervisors derived its authority to establish this commission from the Virginia Code, Section 15.2-1411, and in this provision, it states, "A governing body of a locality has the authority to appoint any advisory board or commission that it deems necessary regarding an area of particular local interest." So crucially, again, this, this commission serves an advisory function only. It does not issue binding recommendations or appropriate funding on its own. Rather, any approval of new initiatives or appropriations comes through the Board of Supervisors in Loudoun County. This commission comprises 15 voting members and two non-voting members. Among those are a chair and a vice chair who each serve two-year terms. Otherwise, all members serve four-year terms and are all appointed by the Board of Supervisors. This, um, appointment provision is also in the relevant provision of the Virginia Code, which says all members are appointed by the Board. So the members should have at least five years of relevant education, training, or experience, and generally they must be residents of the county. Qualified individuals are presented to the Board of Supervisors at a general body meeting, and then at the next meeting are appointed to that open position on the commission. The members represent a variety of key interests relevant to Loudoun County, and per its bylaws, every iteration of the commission must have representation in these key areas. Some of these areas include, for this county, a data center coalition, citizens with relevant activism experience, an environmental planner, among others. The commission advises the Board on issues ranging from conservation and energy strategies to any of the priorities in the Board's strategic plan. The commission then produces an annual report outlining its activities, recommendations, past achievements, and goals for the next year. Also, per its bylaws, the Loudoun County Commission is required to hold an annual public forum to allow members of the public to provide input into that annual report. The commission can also recommend new initiatives and work plans to other standing committees. However, those, um, initiatives or work plans must first be approved by the Board of Supervisors before they can be recommended to another committee. Finally, Loudoun County incorporates public engagement as a core purpose in its bylaws. Again, the goal here was not to create another level of bureaucracy to cut through, but to provide a forum where citizens could come and engage with issues of particular public interest or concern, and allow a space for, again, residents to play an active role in the management and conservation of their environment. Loudoun County's been able to do this through public surveys about environmental priorities among residents, listening sessions where members of the public can express concerns, and community roundtables that bring together local nonprofit organizations around certain environmental issues. So if the Board of Supervisors wishes to establish an environmental commission, we will continue our research, as I mentioned, throughout the semester, with the goal of providing that model ordinance at the end. Again, we believe the Board of Supervisors would benefit from an environmental commission in improving government efficiency, information and data collection, and enhancing public engagement. Thank you all for your time, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you so much. Questions from the Board? Yes, sir, Ms. Bowman.
Thank you for the presentation. It was, it was very good. Just one question. A lot of this is coming from Loudoun County and what they've set up. Is there an opportunity, and, and I'm, I'm not sure, but a schedule when they're going to have their report, that we might attend that and listen to it and kind of see how they're structured and what their report sounds like?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question. So, um, they do annual reports and they present these reports at meetings. I believe they're in July. Um, I can double-check that. However, they have monthly meetings of the environmental commission, so anytime the commission meets to discuss, those are open to the public. They've also published their annual, annual reports online going back to 2020, so they're accessible that way as well.
And one follow-up.
Yes, sir.
So, reading, uh, the executive summary, the, I guess you all are going to be working on this through December, and then it'll be handed off to someone else or another group? Is that correct?
So as it stands, that would be, um, I believe, how it would go now. We can obviously reassess the scope of our involvement as that timeline comes up, if we're, if we think that more time is necessary to conclude this research and reporting part.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Any comments, questions? Okay. Thank you so much, uh, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, great stuff, and we will, um, take a look at getting that letter, uh, signed off for you to continue- continue your work. And so the Board and the public understand this young lady, she's already mentioned she's a student, she's going to be doing it actually for free, is their program, so we're going to continue down this road.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, and I appreciate you. And thank you, Mr. Jaffe, and thank you all for coming down. Yes, sir. All right. Let's see, 5C, countywide transportation planning and VDOT, Mr. Adcock, is he? There he is. Mr. Adcock, Dave Arnold, I'm sorry, Dave Arnold. I got you. I was looking at you. Looking at the wrong guy.
That's all good. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, sir. So the point of this presentation, it's a bit strategic as far as the timing. It's really threefold. As you all are well aware, when we had the progress and planning meeting earlier this month, at the beginning of that meeting, the Board, thankfully and very appreciatively, as I personally am and the rest of staff, we awarded the comprehensive plan project to line and grade. So that project is soon to get underway. So as we all know, transportation planning is a huge part of comprehensive planning in general. Also, as many of you all are already aware, SmartScale, that's a program that VDOT offers. It's a funding stream for large transportation projects, and that is on every other even-year cycle. So that'll be starting up in early 2026, and so we're going to be having further conversations about that. And the third reason why I felt like this would be an important topic to discuss with you all today is that, as I've observed and my own experience being with the county for four years, a lot of these various funding streams and grant opportunities related to transportation projects and planning, we visit them fairly infrequently, and they're not always, you know, terms that me personally, I'm immediately familiar with. And I know, I think it'd be a benefit if this was part of our everyday vocabulary and more regular conversation. So this is an effort to hopefully increase that familiarity. So I'm basically just going to kind of touch on a few concepts and projects that have recently been approved through SmartScale, as well as one that we have an application out there for, that you all approved funding for back this past summer. And then I'm going to turn it over to Carson Eckhart with VDOT, who's one of the planners out of the Lynchburg District, to further discuss VDOT funding streams. So as you all know, a lot of our transportation planning efforts revolve around the Danville MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization. And the Danville MPO, just as the name implies, it encompasses the city of Danville and the more urban areas or suburban areas of Pennsylvania County, which that makes up about 16% of Pennsylvania County's land area. That's all. Or it makes up, however, in terms of population, a much more sizable percentage, about 36% of the county's population. Because as we're well aware, there's a large population concentration around the southern part of the county. To help balance that out, our friends and colleagues with the West Piedmont PDC have launched an update to the Rural Long Range Transportation Plan. And so the purpose of that is going to be to help all the localities that participate in the West Piedmont PDC determine their priorities, which is going to help identify projects that may be deserving of further analysis and evaluation that might put them in line for potential grant funding down the road. So for Pennsylvania County, really, our focus is going to be everything outside the MPO, because the MPO is already being addressed through ongoing MPO and MTO planning efforts already. So to recap, some recently approved and applied-for transportation projects, let's start with the most recent, with SmartScale Round Six. And that's an intersection at Orphanage Road and Franklin Turnpike, just outside the city limits of Danville. And that's for a traffic signal right there at that intersection. And that's a project that's estimated to cost just under $6,000. That's all, $6 million, $6 million. What did I say, $6,000? Yeah, okay. I wish that was the cost. We could want to go a lot further if that were the case. And that was approved just last year. SmartScale Round Five, we saw another intersection in the southern end of the county, US Highway 29 at Spring Garden Road, a turn lane improvement, just under $4 million there. There's a price tag on that. And then, as you all may recall, there was originally this notion or an idea for an R-cut at the tight squeeze in US 29 intersection. Well, the R-cut design was replaced with a turn lane and some traffic signals for that tight squeeze road and US Highway 29 intersection right there. So those have all been approved. They just have yet to be, you know, their construction has yet to begin. A much smaller project in terms of the dollar amount is a project that spun off of the Safe Streets For All study that was conducted through the MPO last winter that West Piedmont PDC initiated and spearheaded with the help of their consultants. And they helped guide us through an implementation grant to the US Department of Transportation's Federal Highways Administration, and the Board graciously agreed to fund 20% or $75,000. And that went to fund an application totaling $375,000 for centerline rumble strips along Mount Cross and Kentuck Roads, as well as wide edge lines for Kentuck Road. So we haven't heard back on the status of that application yet. We hope to sometime this fall. So I just wanted to kind of circle back on where we are with some of those projects. And with all that being said, that just kind of hopefully paves the way for me to introduce Mr. Carson Eckhart, a planner with VDOT out of the Lynchburg District, and he's going to take a deeper dive into VDOT funding streams. Good afternoon. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for having me. As Mr. Arnold said, my name is Carson Eckhart. I'm the Lynchburg District Planner here with VDOT.
Excuse me, sir. Can you raise that mic up?
Sorry. As Mr. Arnold said, my name is Carson Eckhart. I'm the Lynchburg District Planner here with VDOT, and I'm here to discuss funding streams with you all.
Okay.
So VDOT has three primary funding streams that localities can apply for each funding cycle for their transportation projects. I'm going to discuss three today. Just because those are the three primary doesn't mean that they are all of the funding streams we have. There are many more that VDOT offers, as well as the state offers. So you have SmartScale, Transportation Alternatives Program, and Revenue Sharing. And it's important to know that each of these presentation, each of these funding streams are different in how they fund projects, match requirements for each funding stream, as well as the applicable projects that they are allowed into their funding stream. This presentation is mostly going to discuss SmartScale, as it is the biggest funding stream that Virginia has, and it's the one that most localities gravitate to. So SmartScale, as I said, some background context on the funding stream. SmartScale is an even-year funding program maintained by the Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment, also known as OIPi. SmartScale's goal is to fund the right transportation projects with as small as a budget as possible. And they do this through a data-driven approach, where they look at six factors for SmartScale. I'm going to go into that in a little, in a couple of slides here. And that data-driven process, it then creates a score where each project competes with one another. There is no locality match required for SmartScale, but leveraging funds is always recommended. Some projects allowed for SmartScale include multimodal improvements like sidewalks, crosswalks, as well as your shared-use paths and trails, safety improvements like your intersection improvements, your roundabouts, as well as your interchange improvements, operational improvements, as well as transit. For the transit improvement, you'll be coordinating with DRPT compared to VDOT. However, in this area, you normally see DRPT projects with Lynchburg City as well as Danville City. Projects not allowed with SmartScale would be your maintenance projects, your bridge rehabilitations, and for example, your guardrail replacement. The only instance where you are allowed to do a maintenance-esque project is where if a sidewalk is substandard and you're putting in new sidewalk that is ADA compliant and VDOT standard. So the SmartScale funding schedule, as I said, it was an even-year program, meaning that it goes every even year, every other year you will apply for SmartScale funding. It starts in March of, it'll start March of 2026, and it will run towards August. And after that, that's when it goes into the funding cycle. And then in January of 2027 would be when the project scores are given to us, and we're allowed to disseminate that to the local governments. And then that odd year is kind of our lessons-learned feedback session, where we can learn what worked for our district, what worked for other districts, and where we can improve going forward. So in essence, SmartScale never really ends. It, even in the odd years, we're planning for the next round of SmartScale through our corridor studies, through our projects, it never ends, and it's an ever-evolving machine where it changes every single round. There are two primary stages of the application process. First, you have the pre-application process that starts from March 1st to April 1st, and that's essentially where you get all the preliminary information in, your concept sketch, your cost estimate. You're just putting that information in, so the Office of Intermodal Planning can go in, review it, and during that full-app stage is where you get the refined materials. Our location and design section will go through the concept sketch and estimate, get us a more refined estimate and a refined sketch if need be, and that's where that finalized application elements are included, your resolution of support, your schedules, your sketches, and your planning studies. Speaking of prerequisites, there are three main prerequisites for a SmartScale study. First is a Vtrans midterm mean. Now, Vtrans refers to our Virginia Transportation Plan. That's also maintained by the Office of Intermodal Planning, and that is essentially our check for what we can apply for for SmartScale funding. So on 29 and 460, which is our corridors of statewide significance, you might have a safety improvement there. And that safety improvement allows for us to seek a SmartScale project based on that safety there. You might have pedestrian needs if there is pedestrian fatalities on a roadway. We can only look at that pedestrian element for that segment of roadway. And that goes into our study process. When we do a VDOT or an MPO PDC study, we look at those needs, and then that guides us on what we can apply for for an alternative standpoint. And it's important that our staff, the VDOT staff, as well as our local governments, are all kept in the loop for all of our study processes. We don't want to catch you off-guard with an alternative that you might not recommend, so we want to make sure all the necessary parties are included from the beginning of that study process. And then for the pre-app and the full-app, you have that third block there. You have your project sketch, your cost estimate, as well as any resolutions of support. Those two that are bolded, they are required going to pre-app stage. So now that I've gone through all the prerequisite portions, I'm going to go through the scoring. This is going to be a more technical part of the presentation. SmartScale scores projects based on the following categories: safety, congestion, accessibility, land use, environmental and economic development. You can see that there are two asterisks for both land use and environmental. As of Round Six of SmartScale, land use has turned into a multiplicative modifier rather than a flat score. And environmental is the only score in SmartScale that can give you a negative score to your overall project. And where all this leads to is that all six of those, all six of those features are then pulled into that map there. You can see that there is a lot of blue on that map. That map determines your typology for SmartScale. So Pennsylvania County and Danville MPO is a category D. And what that means, sorry, I went to the wrong slide. Category D means that it puts more of an emphasis on safety and economic development. You can see that safety carries 40% of the overall SmartScale score, and economic development carries over, carries 30% of the overall score. That pushes our district to look at things from a safety perspective, as well as an economic development perspective. Doesn't mean that we completely ignore congestion and accessibility, but we are pushed to look at safety because that is our district typology. And that can be changed per the MPO and PDC. So this section, I'm going to look at the scorecards for SmartScale. I apologize if they're a little hard to read on the screen there. Hopefully, they're included in the packet there. So this is the first project from Round Six of SmartScale, and it is the Franklin Turnpike Signal. It is, you can see up at the top there, it was ranked first in our district, so it had the highest score out of all 12 of our projects last round, and it was ranked fourth statewide. So that means it had the fourth highest project, it had the fourth highest project score out of 270 projects in the Commonwealth. I think that is a big achievement, and it just shows that how desperately that intersection needed some sort of improvement. And that came out of our 41 pipeline study in 2023. So the scorecard flows downwards, meaning that you see those six SmartScale factors. It flows downward from the measured value all the way down to the project cost. And that project cost is going to be a reduction to the overall SmartScale score. Any project that is over $10 million, which is most of them, will reduce your score per $10 million. And you can see the Signal project is unique in that it was under $10 million, meaning that it raised the score from 11.3 to 18.9. One other thing to note there is it mentions an eligible funding program up at the top, right by the map. And that section, it has DGP. DGP stands for District Grant Program, and there's another funding pot in SmartScale called High Priority. District Grant Program, those projects that apply for that funding, they all compete with projects in our construction district, meaning that projects in Pennsylvania County compete with Campbell, they compete with Farmville, and they compete with Lynchburg City. Whereas projects for High Priority, they fund with all, they compete with all other HPP projects across the Commonwealth. You might have HPP projects in Bristol, your Route 81 improvements, your 95 improvements, they all compete with one another to get funding. Two different pots. District Grant is normally smaller, and it's revised for our more smaller projects, as well as High Priority, which is where you have your 50, $70 million projects that go through there. Last round of SmartScale, we had about $80 million in our district grant pot, and we got four projects funded from that pot. I'm going to show another project that was funded. That was our, this is our ranked-two project, which is a project in Nelson County, and it is the Tam Bark Roundabout at 151 and Tam Bark Road. You can see here, this is one of those projects where it was over $10 million, and therefore, the project cost was reduced, or the project score was reduced. Both of these projects are important because they highlighted the safety within those intersections, and they utilize that safety score to get those projects funded. With all that being said, there's a couple of best practices we learned from the last round of SmartScale. We need to ensure that there is proper communication between all stakeholders, not even just in the SmartScale period, but before that, when we do our corridor studies, and we do our MPO PDC studies, we need to make sure there is proper communication between all stakeholders involved. We also, something that I've noticed, we had 12 applications last round of SmartScale, and we got four projects funded. So that's about a third of our projects, overall projects. That kind of pushed us to realize that quality applications might be more preferred over quantity. If you have four projects that you want to submit for the last round, for the next round of SmartScale... Sorry. If you have four projects for the next round of SmartScale, and you submit all those for the district grant pot, all four of those projects are going to compete with one another. Whereas if you have one priority that you really want to put in, rather than putting all four, you can put just that one in, and it might score better because it is your priority. And then there, if there is also a push to see the project funded from a county perspective, there's also the potential to leverage some funding into the SmartScale program. There's no match required, but leveraging funds is always recommended, as it helps to reduce your overall project costs, which then therefore raises your score. So for this section, I'm putting SmartScale to the side, and we're going to discuss transportation alternatives and revenue sharing. They are different than SmartScale in that they do not require as much of a data-driven process, and there are some key differences that they have as well. VDOT has a funding fact sheet online that lists out all of the funding streams that we have within the state that the counties can apply for. If they have any questions about those other funding streams, you can send me an email. My contact information will be at the end, and I can get you that funding fact sheet, and we can, we can have a discussion about it. So the other two funding streams, they have numerous differences between themselves, as well as SmartScale. Both of those require locality matches. Transportation Alternative, also known as TAP, requires a 20% match, whereas Revenue Sharing requires a 50% match. Transportation Alternatives is a multimodal focus, so it deals with sidewalks, rails-to-trails, community improvements. It is mostly a multimodal focus, whereas Revenue Sharing can be used... It is mostly a multimodal focus, whereas Revenue Sharing can be used as supplemental funding for yours, for your projects. If a project ends up falling over budget, you can use Revenue Sharing when it comes out in the odd year to supplement that funding. Keep in mind, though, it has a 50% match compared to the 20%, so the locality will be putting more money into that, into Revenue Sharing. TAP has a project cap of 2.5 million, not including the locality funds. With the locality funds, I believe it brings it up to about a 3.5, $3.2 million project that can be submitted. And Revenue Sharing works with your paving projects, your rural additions, and your maintenance projects. However, they need to have a Vtrans need required for funding similar to SmartScale. And that's a picture of the VDOT funding cycle. So Revenue Sharing in TAP will be your odd-year cycles, and SmartScale is going to be your even years. So VDOT stays busy with funding. We're always, we're always looking to see ways we can maximize funding for the localities. Every single locality has all these opportunities available to them, and we want to make sure we can maximize them as most as possible. As you can see here, my contact information is here. My name's Carson Eckhart, I'm the VDOT Lynchburg District Planner. My email and work phone number also there. And that, that is the end of the presentation on my side.
Thank you, Mr. Eckhart. Questions, comments from the board?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Mr. Eckhart, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. I'm sure we all have a bunch of questions, but in, in my district, there's two roads that have been overlooked for years, and, and through the evolution, evolution of VDOT, your planning, they're continuing to be overlooked, and it's a part that I totally understand but I disagree with. And that's the premise that a road has to be brought up to VDOT standards before you guys will come in and take it over. I think it's very unfair, not only to the residents, but to the county at large, and I would like to see that changed. And you know, the criteria, it's, you know, it's a given, Northern Virginia will always get more than rural South Side Virginia. But is there any way that we could look at changing that plan, or maybe even got grandfather some of these roads in? Let's say that VDOT came up with the concept that, you know, maybe we can readdress some of the roads, one of which I'm speaking of, is, it's, it's been considered for 30 years or more. And, you know, the, the final word given to the residents is that you got to bring it up to VDOT standards. And it's 32 houses, I think, on that road? And, you know, that's, it's not going to happen. The residents are not going to chip in to better the road, most of which are just going to grin and bear it. And I think it's just really unfair. I would love to see VDOT and maybe even the General Assembly look at a, a more equitable way of taking care of problems like this. Can you help me?
I completely agree with your sentiment. Working at the Lynchburg District, I can see it, that there is always a battle between the rural and the urban sections of our state. It's two completely different sides of the horseshoe, and we're working, trying to make it so that it's more of an even, even battle rather than swaying one side or the other. That's something, that's something we're working on, and there's always a pathway.
And again, just by way of follow-up, the, the premise that the road has to be brought up to VDOT standards, do you agree with that? Or could we look at changing it?
From a planning perspective, that kind of shifts over more to the residency in a conversation than with planning. That is something that Jay Craddock is also here, if he wants to chime in on that question, that is given.
I think whether I would disagree or not with that statement, you would have to go back in time to the time when the road was built. So when the road was built, the original developer was made aware that these roads were not going to be taken into the system unless they were built to VDOT standards. So they took shortcuts to save money, but I, so from that perspective, I don't agree that the rest of the taxpayers should have to pay for it, but I also understand that the people who are living there today are not the ones that, that moved into the development So I feel sorry for those folks, but it would take some sort of a legislative change, because there is a program designed to take those roads into the system called the Rural Edition Program, but part of that is money has to come from somewhere. Carson spoke a little bit about Revenue Sharing, so that is one possible avenue where at least the residents wouldn't have to pay for 100% of the cost, they would only have to pay for 50%. One thing with the Revenue Sharing Program that is important to point out is that applications get divided into four different priorities, priority one through four, and historically only priority one and two projects have been funded, or at least recently, the last several cycles. So it would, it would, if there was a possibility of, or there was some interest between the residents or the county of participating in the Revenue Sharing Program to bring one of these roads up to standards, it would be important to get that road on the county's capital improvement program, because that will increase the priority of the project, and it will stand a much better chance of receiving funds through the Revenue Sharing Program. So that, so that's something to be thinking about way in advance, that, you know, if, if the road's on the capital improvement program, then it's going to stand a chance of, it would actually stand a chance of being funded, or 50% of it being funded. Otherwise, it's really not much of a chance at all that it's going to make the cut.
You, you've always been so helpful, and I appreciate that, and we've had similar conversations, and, and I like what you said about the legislative side, and that's maybe what we need to look at, because I, I know, I know you, and I know your heart, and if it was up to you, we'd, we'd have good roads everywhere. But, but y'all have done the best you could, we appreciate that, but still looking for a more plausible economical way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Bowman?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next Tuesday, I believe it is, the Danville MPO is going to meet. Are you going to be there, or a representative going to be there for that?
Many from VDOT will be there. I will try to, I will try to be there in person. If not, I will be there virtually, virtually, and there will be someone from VDOT Planning there as well.
Okay, so are you going over the same presentation at that meeting?
I'll be, I'll be present, but I won't be going over that same presentation, but we can have a discussion at the MPO Policy Board meeting as well, if you would like.
Okay, just curious. Thank you. Got you.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you being here. All right, we move to item 6A, Staff Committee, You know, Constitutional Officers Report, Water and Sewer, Mr. Chris Eckhart.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir. Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir. I'm here to talk to you today about water and sewer rate adjustments. In May of '22, the Department of Public Works implemented a, or completed a comprehensive water and wastewater master plan that included a rate study. The purpose of the rate study was to develop a multi-year plan for rates that will provide sufficient revenue to implement needed capital improvements, maintain and improve our existing system, and allow the water and wastewater systems to be self-supporting. The results of the study propose these shown rate increases over several years that will allow us to meet future revenue requirements, maintain and improve our water and sewer utility infrastructure, and maintain adequate debt service coverage ratios, and to maintain adequate cash reserves to improve the financial condition of the overall utility. In January of '23, a rate increase was approved by the board, and it was adopted and implemented. This increase was our first increase since 2013. Due to the somewhat controversial real estate reassessment and associated rate adjustments in 2024, a water and sewer rate adjustment was not considered at that time. Since we're nearing the end of 2025, I'd like the board to consider an increase that combines the suggested 24 and 25 increases, and then approve automatic increases for the next two fiscal years. Since approving the rates requires a public hearing and advertisement, improving these automatic implemental rate adjustments would, over the next several years, would be easier to, for the staff to implement. So you can see from this table, 2023 was, that 3.1% increase was implemented in January of '23. So my proposal is to increase, to combine 24 and 25, which is 2.3 and 1.9 for a 4.2% increase to be implemented now, and then 2.2% increase to be implemented in fiscal year '26, '27, and a 2.1 increase to be implemented in fiscal year 2027 and '28. The following years, I think we should wait, maybe we will do an update to our, to our rate study, depending on how our capital improvement projects, you know, those can change over time, and I think we should wait and see what's coming down the pipe to, to see if those are still applicable increases. So to give you an idea of, in dollar-wise, what we're looking at, our current rate for, and just looking at some of our systems, our Danville service areas and our well systems are all the same rate. We have a couple of systems that have different rates, Vista Point, Hurt, and Chatham is a little bit different, so I'll, I'll kind of go into Danville and go into Chatham and discuss some of the individual rates for those different systems. So our current rate, this is every two months, so we bill six times a year, every two months, our base rate is $47.50. Basically, what's that, a little less than $24 a month. That includes 8,000 gallons of allowance, which is based on an average household usage during that time period. And then if you use over that amount, which we call overage, it's, it's billed at $7.25 per 1,000 gallons. So implementing, or implementing the, the suggested rate increase for fiscal year '25, '26, 4.2%, that would take that rate up $2 in two months, $2 in two months. And it would take up the overage from $7.25 to $7.55. And then you can see the other adjustments for fiscal year '26, '27, '27, '28 would go up from $49.50 to $50.60, and then up to $51.70 for our, our base rate. Now, the Chatham service area, we buy water from the town of Chatham, because their, their rate to us is higher than what we pay to the city of Danville. Their rate is a little bit different, so that's shown, their base rate is 55. That would go up to $57.30 in fiscal year '26, $58.60 in fiscal year '27, and the $59.80 in fiscal year '28, and you can see the overage amounts there are, are the same. The Hurt service area is a little bit different and requires special consideration because Hurt charges the county the exact same rate that they charge their citizens for us for bulk water. And as you may know, that Hurt has probably one of the highest rates in the nation for, for water. Current rate is $25 minimum service charge every two months, regardless of usage, plus $15 per 1,000 gallons used. And when that was implemented, that just barely covered what we paid the town of Hurt. And so our proposed rate increase would be that same minimum service charge every two months, regardless of usage, plus the $19 per 1,000 gallons used. That is because Hurt just implemented a rate increase, and their rate is $18.61 per 1,000 gallons. So that just puts us just a little bit above Rate, Hurt's rate, just, just to cover our cost, so that we're not putting too much burden on, on the citizens. Looking at the sewer rates, this is the Danville service, service area, it's a little bit different. They get 10,000 gallons of usage every two months. The base rate's 47.50, and that, that would go up accordingly. So just to, to give you some comparison to other localities, with the proposed increase for this current fiscal year that I'm proposing, the 4.2%, this puts our rate for water, this is water based on 4,000 gallons usage, and this has been equated to a monthly rate, even though we, we bill bi-monthly, this has been equated to a monthly rate because most localities do monthly. You can see that we are a little bit higher than the city of Danville and the town of Alta Vista, but we are lower than Chatham, we're lower than Martinsville, we're lower than Campbell County, Henry County, Halifax, Gretna, and the Bedford Regional Water Authority, significantly lower than a lot of those. And we're lower, we're, we're higher than the city of Danville because we have to pay the city of Danville the same rate that their citizens have to pay for our bulk water, except for some of our meters that are considered an industrial rate because of the, the higher flows that go through. We do get a little bit of a break on those industrial rate meters. And it's important to notice, if you look at a couple of those, like the town of Alta Vista charges that to their in-limit citizens. If you live outside of the town of Alta Vista and get water from the town, that rate goes up to $35.70 a month, and the same with the town of Chatham, which goes up to $39.50. So it's a significant increase if you live outside of the town limits, and that we have to cover, you know, a very large service area, and they have the, the, the benefit of being, you know, fairly compact, so they don't have as much miles of pipe as we have to deal with. So looking at this in a chart, you can see where we stand, and you can see that we're, even with the proposed rate increase, we're, we're in pretty low, according to our localities, other localities. The same comparison with our sewer rates, we would be there at the, at the low end of the localities there with that proposed rate, would be under the city of Danville, under the town of Gretna, under, under all those other localities. And that's where we stand with a, on a chart. So with that said, what we, if, if you guys are in agreement with this proposal, our next step would be to adopt a resolution of the, all of the changed rates in November, and then we would have to do a public hearing in December that is required for all of the localities in the state that have their water system, that we have to advertise those rates, and then we would, after that public hearing, we would be able to implement those.
Questions from the board, comments? Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when you say implement those changes, when do they go in effect? One July?
No, the, what I'm proposing right now would go into effect as soon as it's, it's, as soon as it's approved by the board. So probably 1st of, if it's approved in December, maybe the end, sometime middle of December or 1st of January. And then the next rate increase would be, would follow the fiscal year, so it would go July 1.
Okay. All right. I appreciate the presentation and the data, and it's obvious that, you know, we're right on the cutting edge of a profit-loss right here, especially operating this, the water and the sewer. So I brought this up in the past, and it's about having water lines and sewer lines available to homes that are not hooked up to it. So has there been any thought into that? Because we're, we're at a point now where funds, resources are very limited, and so, you know, we're going to have to make a decision on how we move forward with that. If you've got the, the resources in front of your house, if they run along the curb out there, and you're not hooked up to it, then what are we thinking about as far as doing a mandatory hookup to these services, whether it's the water or the sewer there?
If that's something that the board would, wants to consider, I can certainly bring back a proposal for, for, you know, updating our policy and procedures to, that we implement that.
Well, I think, and just a follow-up question, Mr. Chairman, I think, and this is just me, and I'm one of seven, but I think that's something that we need to be, you know, aware of, that you probably need to bring to us some options, some recommendations, so we can make a good decision on something like that. The board here does not have that information, and we're not the experts in this at all, but I would like to see where the lines actually run in this county, and where they end, and what residents are not hooked up to those lines, and they're just bypassing those homes or businesses, and why they aren't hooked up to it. Because those revenues there, if you've got somebody at the end of a line that's actually hooked up to the water, but it passes 50 homes getting there, then why aren't they hooked up to it? That's, that's my point.
Right. And that, I think for the most part, you'll see that, that where we've put lines, and that generates new construction, so they are connected, where you pass existing homes with, like this R. L. Smith Road project that we're getting ready, that we're looking at, the homeowners already have a well, so it's going to be, you know, a little bit of a, you're going to get some pushback when they have, well, I have a perfectly functional well, why should I connect? So I, I think that's been the argument in the past, and it's been a little bit, you know, it hadn't been seriously considered because of that issue.
And I appreciate that. I have a well also, and I live on 41, but if I And I appreciate that. I have a well also, and I live on 41, but if I had city water, I would hook up to it, because those wells, especially north of me, are starting to run dry, and it's a hit and miss when you get north of, or on 41 there, running up toward FC Beverly and that area out there. So it's just, this is what I would like to see. I'd like to see some research, and then a presentation made back to the board on what we have already in place, and the planned infrastructure that's going to be in there, and what the plan is, how would, how do we go forward in hooking up to that? Again, it's, I like your presentation, it's very good, it's eye-opening, but going up $2 and $3, that's, that's not going to cut it. We're going to have to move, make some, make some significant steps on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's my.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman and Mr. Dalton.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Adcock, good presentation. Oh, on this increase, is this going to cover just your operating costs, right?
No, what they looked at in the study was, because we did it in conjunction with the master plan, they looked at some capital projects that we had identified. So they worked in the capital projects, they worked in, you know, our, of course, our operational costs, and they worked in maintenance costs based on our existing infrastructure. So it has all been considered in the pot of, of all the money.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Adcock, let me make my comments here real quick. Good presentation, however, you know, I guess I'm going to kind of play the devil's advocate here a little bit. What, what communication has taken place between staff and the community to share with them that a rate increase might be headed their way? What kind of communication have we had with the residents?
That's why we do the, the public hearing. So we'll do that, we'll do the, the resolution, which average, which spells out all the rate changes, and then we'll have the public hearing, which will be the, the time for the citizens to, to, you know, provide feedback.
I, I mean, I, I understand that process as far as, you know, legalities, but what we're talking about is water, and, you know, the, the elephant in the room is the fact that the economy is contracting. Some people think it's recession going on, and, and now people even, you know, we should say those that are on some type of federal assistance are not going to be receiving their food stamps, or SNAP payments, or whatever the case is. I'd like to be a little bit more proactive than just following the state statute. I think what we should do is, a letter should go out to all of the affected residents and inform them that there may be a rate increase coming down the pipe. Now, also, or, you know, I would be in favor of kind of putting it on pause to kind of see exactly, you know, how this economy is going to shake out going into '26. We have other areas that we can be proactive in terms of looking for additional revenue, rather than putting an undue burden on our taxpayers for water. So I, I, you know, I, I can't kind of wrap my mind around that, excuse me, because, you know, even residents on the northern end of the counter lake, you know, the Hurt residents, they're hitting with double whammy. So I'm just, of course, I'm one, I can't act, you know, laterally, but as, as far as the chairman is concerned, I am going to very heavily lean on this board to make sure that we don't, you know, and you can call it what you want, it's going to be another tax on the citizens, okay? This county can find additional revenue in other areas rather than rate increase on water at this juncture, and especially when the county's behind in terms of, you know, the actual infrastructure that needs to be in place. That's my take.
A couple of things is, you know, I would refer you to the charts that show how, you know, how low we are compared to other localities, even with the proposed increase. And two, we have to consider that this is a, a separate entity, you know, an enterprise fund. So it, instead of getting revenue from other sources, we need to make sure that this entity as a enterprise fund supports itself, and that's kind of the way that, that I look at it. But, you know, if you look at what we provide for that cost, you know, you, you go to your tap, and you turn the tap, and you get water out of the tap. You don't have to do anything. You don't have to go to the store, you don't have to put it in a bottle, you don't have to do anything. And, and the amount of water that you get out of that tap is pennies per gallon versus, you know, $3 if you go to, to Sheetz and buy a, a bottle of water. So the, the, you know, you're paying for the, the convenience, I think, is a lot of it, not so much the water. And, and, and so I, I would urge the board to consider what we're providing for that cost, and also comparatively to what the other localities are.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Adcock. Where is the break-even point on the water right now, based on your study and your analysis?
I, I couldn't tell you that right off the top of my head.
That's, that's my point. Okay?
But I'll go off, what I'm going off of is, is the study that we've had prepared by the, by the consultant, that's what I'm using. Yes, sir.
I understand, sir. I understand, and I appreciate that. But right now, I, I, I would like to know, before the, this board makes a move on the rates, I would like to know whether or not this county is actually in the black on water, and then we can make an informed decision on whether or not we need to raise the rates at this juncture. And that information I'd like to have. I, I apologize, and it, I'm just kind of data-driven. And at the same time, you know, I hear your now, your analysis and your analogy of going to the store for bottled water. I get that. But we have to take a look at the per capita income of the county. Everyone is not as blessed to be at the same pay rate as a Chris Adcock or county staff. That's, that's my point. Okay? Any other questions from the board? Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. All right. Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman? All right. Let's take a five-minute break, pause for the calls, and we will be right back in about five to seven minutes, seven minutes.
Ladies are happy, I see them smiling.
I, I apologize.
Thanks for fixing my road, buddy. I don't know how you want that, but you're good.
I ain't making that no come drawl, which way it's turning. Dictation, man, I gotta ask somebody to talk to you.
Play take that cup, I said.
Do a little scribble. He's doing a little scribbling over here. No, you're right.
My name's, you gotta pick up a hog, and then you kill a little bear. I was just cold. I mean, I'm not.
Throw the whip on my mouth, man.
I'm sitting here like.
That's right.
Hands are numb.
I gotta tie my scarf on.
Let's see.
I normally don't complain about being cold, but we go kill hogs and cats.
Are you cold now?
I'm a free devil.
Now we're gonna live.
I'm a, I'm gonna go snack kale and take a sip.
I, I hadn't, I glimpsed it, that's all I done. Right in the shit came. Yeah, thank you, that who lives.
No, uh, look, Mary.
Yeah.
The crowd had said exactly what I wanted him to say.
Right, so only if there's that legislation.
So he, he might as well take care of it. Exactly. Because if, if they take care of it, it'll make it easy for us. And look, my road is a prime example. Back 30 years ago, when the road view were committed, every supervisor put somebody on the, FAA supervisor, my supervisor. I asked him, I got petition, get him canceled.
Hey, big man. Big, what you doing, man?
It's big. FAA. I said, no, I didn't, we talked to you. There's no kidding. Um, when the time came for my road to be looked at.
Yeah.
He got put on the list. And so when, when they voted on the list, mine wasn't even considered. So I, I thought that's exactly, it's the opposite, and it's, it's got, got put on the list.
Oh, he's always, he's always honest. He might have liked what he's done, but he's always.
I appreciate that. He's my, he's my, he's my, he's my, he called me major, he was such a, he was a wonderful, he said, hey, he said, we found $80,000 for what you were paying. I said, yes, sir. He says, go start on money. And he was, he was paying the money, he was paying my rent. That's where he's been.
That's right. So what, let me, come on down and start then.
Yes, sir.
Well. That's right.
We've had a couple of those in my life.
Right there, the day you talk about, you know, awesome, awesome amount of dollars. But we don't pay the bill, we live it now. They can't even let the school bus, that's what's happening. Yeah.
You know, if, if offices pay, it's not bad.
They made money.
Your clients are the top.
Yeah.
And look, oh, they can't even just, they can't even get, oh, God, that's where all they can.
That's where all they can.
Be out of nowhere, put, put, put it straight in the county, just lower.
We're right there on up.
All right, let's see, who are we missing? Mr. Bowman, Mr. Dudley? Ready, Madam Clerk? Okay, we're going to move to 6B, our 2027 budget calendar review. Ms. Vanderheide, good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. It's nice to be before you.
Oh, always a pleasure.
Hopefully mine doesn't take but just a few minutes. You do have a copy of the calendar, if you don't want to read along on your screen. I did print out you a hard copy, but we're just going to go over the calendar. Thank goodness for Mr. Bowman, he's proofed it, and he's made sure that all your dates are good, which is good, and we left out one word. So we'll go over that when we get to it. But tonight, I need for you all to approve this calendar, if you so choose to, after we've gone over it. This is our first step in the budget process. In fact, it's really, we're further along than you think, because we've already notified our staff, department heads, of the deadlines of when they need to have budget requests in, as well as their
Okay. All right. Um, the next item is for some opioid abatement requests that have been made to the county in the last few months. This started, probably back in the summer, but we weren't sure what the asks were, so we waited until now to, to bring it before you all. So, um, as you will remember, the opioid abatement fund, it holds all of the drug abatement funding that we've received from settlements, from, um, drug companies and that kinda thing, and this money is to be used for the abatement of, um, the drug epidemic in, in our county. So we do have three requests, two of them, um, Judge Moreau actually called me personally about, she's a big advocate for the Drug Treatment Court that's located in Danville. We support that Drug Treatment Court along with the city of Danville. Um, it is run by the Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board. They have two clinicians that work in the court, and so she is requesting that, um, they receive a total of fifty thousand dollars of the, these funds for intensive treatment, um, when a, when regular recovery for some of these addicts does not work. And so this would be basically in, um, like an, in, like in a hospital stay or intensive treatment in some type of treatment facility. Um, and so the fif, the ask is fifty thousand dollars. The second request from, um, Judge Moreau, um, and this came via the Treatment Court itself, was for some training funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, and this is to, um, basically provide the training to the staff to get them up to speed on how to handle, um, opioid, um, dependency with the clients that they come in contact with. It also provides some scholarship funding, um, to get them more training as well. So, um, these funds would be appropriated by you all, and we would not actually expend those funds without an invoice from the court showing that these things have been done and what they were utilized for. Um, the last request was made by Jim Bebo, the executive director at Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services. Um, we actually provided a hundred thousand dollars of our drug opioid abatement funding to them along with the city's hundred thousand dollar contribution to purchase Valley Star Credit Union. They renovated that building to serve both adults and juveniles. It's a twenty-three hour crisis intervention center. And they were given their licensure, you know, um, everybody seemed happy with it, and now the powers that be, the Department of Behavioral Health and Mental Health have, um, come back and they said you need greater distance between your adults that you serve and juveniles that you serve. So they said you can't serve juveniles unless you do a renovation, a major renovation. They have gotten with Deberry and they have plans to renovate that building to add about thirty-five hundred square feet, um, that would completely separate those two groups of people into adults and juveniles. And, um, they are receiving the majority of the funding for this project from the Department of, um, Mental and Behavioral Health, which is great because they're the ones that kinda said you need to do this, and they also are getting grant funding, but they have made a request of the city and the county. The city is providing seventy-five thousand dollars of their opioid abatement funding to them, and, um, they are requesting for us to match that as well and do the same thing. So the total ask is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and just bear in mind, we have made a commitment that these funds only be used for opioid abatement and can't be used for anything else. And so, um, really, we don't have really other uses of these funds, and they've just been sitting and accumulating o, over the years. Because we do, because we have made that commitment, we are eligible to receive grant funding from the opioid abatement authority at the state. So, um, some of our drug treatment that we've paid for so far has been that grant funding, but we would actually use, um, our direct distribution from these drug companies for this purpose. So with that, I'll stop talking and you all can ask questions if you have them.
Any questions for Ms. Vanderheide? Everybody good? Yes, sir. Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Ms. Vanderheide, is that money can be used for construction or does it have to be used for actually a patient's well-being?
No, it doesn't have to be used for patients. In fact, a lot of reg, a lot of localities have gone in regionally, and I think there's even one in southwest that's actually built a hospital. So, you know, the Crisis Intervention Center is specifically for, it not only takes in mental health patients, but it also takes in those that are addicted to drugs and that kinda thing, so.
I thought maybe it had to be used just for patients.
Perfect use for that. Uh, we've also bought like mobile units in, in the past to go out into the community. They've talked about maybe getting grant funding for a mobile unit. Um, and so they're trying to do more, um, to get people that are in need off the streets and, without taking them to the hospital. And that's what that center is for, so that they can be evaluated and, um, get some help, maybe some outpatient help that would not create the need for going to the hospital for that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? None?
All right.
We're good. Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide.
All right, and this is also.
It's also on consent. That's correct. All right. Let's see. Move down to item number seven, anything to discuss for the business meeting. Uh, all righty. Mr. Evans, would you read us into close then?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There is one matter designated for closed session after the amended amendment made to the agenda, which is discussion concerning the prospective business or industry with expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries' interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Legal authority, Virginia Code, Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A five. Subject matter, unannounced prospective businesses and industries, purpose, general economic development projects update, Mr. Chairman, to now be appropriate for a motion, second discussion and vote regarding closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I will entertain the motion to go into close.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, go into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Is there support?
I'll second that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ingram. End of discussion. Hearing none, cast your votes. We convene to closed session.
Anything else? And so, um, really, we don't have really other uses of these funds, and they've just been sitting and accumulating over the years. Because we do, because we have made that commitment, we are eligible to receive grant funding from the opioid abatement authority at the state. So, um, some of our drug treatment that we've paid for so far has been that grant funding. But we would actually use, um, our direct distribution from these drug companies for this purpose. So with that, I'll stop talking, and you all can ask questions if you have them.
Any questions for Ms. Van De Heide? Everybody good?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tucker?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Ms. Van De Heide.
Yes.
Is that money can be used for construction? Or does it have to be used for actually a patient's well-being?
No, it doesn't have to be used for patients. In fact, a lot of regi-- a lot of localities have gone in regionally, and I think there's even one in southwest that's actually built a hospital. So, you know, the Crisis Intervention Center is specifically for, it not only takes in mental health patients, but it also takes in those that are addicted to drugs and that kind of thing. So, um...
I thought maybe it had to be used just for patients.
Perfect use for that. Uh, we've also bought, like, mobile units in the past to go out into the community. They've talked about maybe getting grant funding for a mobile unit. Um, and so they're trying to do more, um, to get people that are in need off the streets and without taking them to the hospital. And that's what that center is for, so that they can be evaluated and, um, get some help, maybe some outpatient help that would not create the need for going to the hospital for that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Not?
All right.
We're good. Thank you, Ms. Van De Heide.
All right, and this is also on consent?
It's also on consent. That's correct. All right. Let's see. Move down to item number seven. Anything to discuss for the business meeting? Uh, all righty. Mr. Evans, would you read us into closed then?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There is one matter designated for closed session after the amended amendment made to the agenda, which is discussion concerning the prospective business or industry with expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries' interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Legal authority Virginia Code, Section 2.237-11A5. Subject matter: Unannounced prospective businesses and industries' purpose, general economic development projects update. Mr. Chairman, it now be appropriate for a motion, second discussion, and vote regarding closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I will entertain the motion to go into closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, go into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Is there support?
I'll second that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ingram. End of discussion. Hearing none, cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Convened to closed session.
All right, folks, we're going to reconvene here coming out of closed. Mr. Evans, would you read the statement?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It is resolved that at the Pittsaviny County Board of Supervisors work session held on October 21st, 2025, the board hereby certifies by a recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion authorizing a closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any board member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the act, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the board's minutes. We will now have a roll call vote regarding said certification of closed session. Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?